The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking, First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Morin, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
With that, I call this the City Council meeting. No call. Madam Clerk? Alderman Marshall. Alderman Hopery.
President.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderman Henderson.
Here.
Alderman Fraser.
Here.
Alderman Burks.
Here.
Okay. We've had a chance to look over the minutes from the December 9 meeting and then the call being read out last week. We'll do them one at a time.
I know that the minutes for our regular scheduled meeting on December 9 we approve as mailed and received.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands, five, four.
I move that we approve the call minutes on January 9 as emailed and received.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands, five. Now it's time for the city clerk's report.
In our general funds, year-to-date, January through December 2019, revenues received Expenses by department administrators, $339,918.50. Law enforcement, $1,209,771.49. Fire Department, $344,655.76. Sanitation, $738,118.58. Building codes, $19,556.10. District Court, $97,671.90. Municipal building, $30,212.73. Recreation, $159,224.70. Cultural Center, $30,051.10. Almera Enablement Center, $17,030.80. Shooting range, $34,633.91. The Senior Citizen Center, $4,693.81. The other, $29,125.51. Airport, $21,518.97. For total expenses, $3,076,183.50. And that's a net gain of $17,521.70. Revenues received in street funds, year-to-date, $550,725.17. Expenses were $545,555. That's a net gain of $5,170.17. And we have other funds attached to.
I move that we approve the financial statement presented by the city clerk.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands, five.
You should have a copy of your cash balances for the month of December. City sales tax received, you may notice that there was a drop of about $8,000 from November to December. We received in December, $72,220.17. For year-to-date, total of $905,336,905,336.34. We're up about 2% for year-to-date. In the county, we received $49,167.96. And they're down for the month for $5,000, but it's up to year-to-date for 3%. We understand that's true. You should also have a copy of your district clerk's report for December. And you will also have a fourth quarter overtime report as well.
Those who are on the Ways and Means Committee, if you will put this in your folder for budgeting purposes.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next is, you have your committee assignments for the coming year. There's been a few changes, some changes. If you were at the agenda meeting, you got this ahead of time and you had time to look at it.
Now, who made the changes? You decided this was best for each one of the aldermen?
Yes, sir. Based on the conversation that I've heard in meetings over the year, I kind of give the aldermen where they seem to have their passions.
Well, in the past, we've always decided, well, it's been what you decide where you want to go. Where you have more interest, but this is what you want to do, that's fine. I know that the street committee, we was on it for quite a while, but some members was taken off because some areas were more looked at than others in certain wards. So the previous mayor decided to take some of the people off.
Well, as you can see, I've left that one as is.
Well, I mean, I told you before, I didn't care to even be on it after the previous mayor did what he did.
Well, we can discuss, and if I need to make any changes by next council meeting, I will. If you'd like to visit with me after, or come by the office, or call me, we'll see what we can do.
Okay. We do need a motion to approve the committee assignments. I guess we need to get it on the floor, then have discussions, so I will move that a recommended city assignments of the council members be approved as planned.
Second. Okay. We've had discussions, but I guess if there's any more, we can have some more. If not, then I'll call for a show of hands.
Are you saying all in favor?
Yes, all in favor, show of hands. Okay, that's four, four. Any opposed? Two opposed.
Actually, three.
Three, four.
Three, four.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct. You got that.
Okay.
So actually, so it was three, four, and two against.
Joel and Zach.
Joel and Zach. Yes, ma'am, I keep forgetting, you can't see all the hands.
But it actually failed. Would you have to have four votes for it?
Well, no, I mean, we got the four. Would you prefer that it had four votes to pass?
No.
Okay, moving forward, police chief, report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe everyone knows I have my monthly report for the month of December 2019, and also we supply it to you with the year report. That gives you statistics of calls answered and things of that nature. Once again, as I'm going to say, we're just chucking on as usual. As of right now, we are still, one patrol is short, and we're finishing up some background checks. Hopefully, we'll be having the civil service board meeting by the end of this month to maybe fill that spot. Still currently have two out on medical leave indefinitely. Don't have a timeline of when we expect them back, so the overtime, they seem to be a little bit out of whack this early in the year, but we're trying to get that tampered in a little bit once we get individuals back off their medical leave, get another officer hired.
Are they on family medical leave as well?
Family medical leave, they're, well, neither one of them, neither one was in the line of duty, so they're...
Doesn't matter, family medical leave is an act that was passed when President Phil Clinton was in office, and an individual is eligible for 12 weeks.
That goes above my pay grade, that usually takes up with the human resources up at the mayor's office, so I know they have six days, I think one of them has...
But it runs in conjunction.
Okay, all right, we'll take that at the mayor's office.
It's being taken care of.
And also, we're trying to curb in the, hopefully, this year, a little bit better on the repairs for the vehicles. What we've done, he's here tonight, the last quarter of the year, we assigned Officer Gorman to be in charge of the vehicles as far as making sure that individual officers got the road change on a timely basis, and just a little small maintenance thing that will lead to big problems, and he's been on top of that, so I think he will feel, hopefully, this year, a slight differential change in decrease in our run, yearly or monthly, make this build on vehicles.
Are you saying we were not doing this timeline?
Well, it's one thing to have the individual officers do the responsible for it, and another thing to have somebody to hold them accountable for it as far as on a daily basis. And what Officer Gorman does is, they'll put their, if they have like a small tick in the vehicle, you know...
So it doesn't pop up on their vehicle and say, you know...
Right, now it's time, we have them do a weekly PMC sheet, and once they turn it to him, and if he'll look over the PMC sheets, and if it's like, if they say like it has a small knock or rattle, he'll get the vehicles to the shop to make sure that everybody get to a point where we're buying transmission, and all we have to do is get transmission through a check. And other than that, just as usual.
Alderman Burks, did you hear anything? As police chairman?
No, ma'am.
Okay. If there's nothing else?
But again, I just want to mention, he's mentioned about it, that the shortage, I guess is going to continue to be the shortage of our offices, yet with the increase that we were able to get for the officers, we still have a lot more to do, and we know that there is a crisis in this area, and we should do everything we possibly can to pay the officers more whenever we can, folks, if you're going to get qualified officers and people.
All right. How far are we? Do we pay under the surrounding areas? No.
No, we're comfortable with, you know, like, you know, Monticello's a little bit larger, a little bit bigger tax base, so they're a little bit more. What the situation is, also the pay, but just like when we up our pay, utilize that we can keep more people than other places up there pay also, it's just, this job has become a point where, you know, it's kind of scary to people, it's so...
Right.
You know, back when I first started, it was kind of glamorous becoming a police officer, but that glamour has kind of shined off on a little bit in rural areas, so that's basically what it is. So the pay is comparable, but you have to understand the job that goes along with the pay.
Right.
So that's what the...
And they are allowed to get quite a bit of overtime, those that would like to do the overtime.
Well, we try, we try to keep it in hand, but the reason why we get so much overtime is because of the bad conditions that we have, so...
But we're looking at around $20,000 already.
Well, the officers are making a decent living, yes, ma'am, they are, yes, ma'am.
Well, what about insurance for your family? I'm just saying, does other places have insurance?
Yes, some, yes.
That's a big factor right there when you look at the surrounding areas and have insurance for your dependents.
That is correct, that is more aligned to the other departments that do.
Do all, like, surrounding communities, do they offer insurance?
It depends on the department, not unlike Monticello does, and that's the other departments that do. It really depends on the tax basis and what the, what the cities willing to pay. So I would say it's probably, from the statistics I look at, probably 60, 40, 60% of the departments do.
I know, that's a quick question.
Right, but, and I don't, like I said, it depends on the side of the department, you know, so like, so bigger tax basis, they have more money to spend, but that is, Alderman Burks is correct, that is a lure that other cities use, is paying for the family insurance that will get, people with families accompany their partners, or is able to structure individuals to, as a way to settle down, right.
And also, you can look in the wage comp study, and it will tell you all of the surrounding cities, the size, et cetera, as to what their benefits are.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, sir. We'll move next to our acting fire chief, Mike Ashcraft.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe you have a copy of my report in your packets there, and as you saw in that report, we had 22 calls during the month of December, had four structured fires, and 20, two other various sundry calls. That gave us a total of 281, ending the year, that's 109 more than 2018, so we really increased the calls from the previous year. We started this year with the bang, we had a lot of structured fires in the last few days, two Saturday and Friday night, and two week, a few days before that, so we're starting this year off, not where I want to start, we're working with it. I just want to let you know that I have about four volunteer slots open at the current time, we are advertising that in the media, and also on the city's website, so we're taking applications right now for four volunteers. If you know of anybody, send them all away. The fire department's ball is coming up in February 8th, if anybody wants to attend, this will be our 100-year reunion of the fire department's existence, we were established in 1920. So we're going to have a 100-year celebration, I'm trying to find out who the chiefs were, and some old pictures from way, way back then, I've been able to dig a few up so far, but I want to find out who the chiefs were from the start to the end. And that's all I have.
Okay. Are you going to have like a souvenir journal, or?
I'm going to try, we're going to try to do a slideshow at the event there, and some kind of book we're trying to put together, you know, so we can, we can get it out. I've met with some people, and I've been able to come up with some horse drones, and some old fires from the city, from parts of the cities and some buildings that no longer exist, I've been able to come up with that. I'm looking for pictures of when the engines used to be here in the middle of this hall right out here, but I haven't been able to get my hands on those, I remember them when I was a kid, but, and I was up here with my dad, because he was a fireman, during those years when the engines were here, and the pole was in the bag, living quarters were upstairs, but I can't find the pictures, so, anybody who has them?
You put it on Facebook?
Ma'am?
You put it on Facebook?
I have not, I have not. I was just trying to work some other channels that people had given me, and work that first.
Okay, Alderman Fraser, you have a report from the fire committee?
Yeah, the fire committee met and approved the recommendation from the fire commission of hiring a part-time fire chief, Mike Ashcraft, and we recommend that he be hired at a salary of $24,000.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands?
Well, ma'am, let me ask you a question, question?
Yes, sir.
If he, he's saying a assistant fire chief, what now?
No, his position now is a, he is the permanent part-time fire chief.
Assistant part-time fire chief.
No, sir, not assistant.
No assistant.
Permanent.
He is, he's a part-time fire chief.
What's his job description?
Basically, the very same thing as a full, as the full-time fire chief.
So why not make him a full-time fire chief?
Because of the time involved, he, he has other responsibilities and duties, and it was recommended by the civil service commission to, and the council voted, to make this a part-time position, and that's what they did.
Well, actually, the council added another position to the personnel policies, having a full-time and the option of a part-time.
If we need to go back to a full-time position, it's still personnel policy.
Then the chiefs of police need a part-time, wouldn't they?
We don't have two positions for the fire, I'm not the chair, but we only have one position, which is a part-time fire chief. We do not have a full-time fire chief and a...
I'm a little slow, that's what you want, I'm asking.
That'll be right, that'll be fine.
I'm a little slow, that's...
Explain it to him, please.
He's going to be the only one of, the only chief.
Okay.
Part-time, no full-time, he's working the same thing he's been doing for the last nine months.
Okay, so his duty is will be the same?
Yes, sir.
Full-time chief?
Yes, sir.
But not making the money?
That's right.
And not putting in the hours?
Not, not the full-time fire chief hours.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to call for a vote, all those in favor, by show of hands, three, four, all those opposed, two against. Anything else?
The fire, we also need to pay the Southeast Arkansas Firefighters Association dues from volunteers, and there's a list of them that we got today in your packet. Okay, I move that we pay the dues.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands, that's five, any opposed? No, okay. Is that it?
That's it for me.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, sanitation manager, Mr. Mike May.
As far as building codes goes, we had limited activity as far as permits, we had two building permits, a few lack full-fledged permits, things picking up in January, so this month will be better. We had a few lot complaints, addressed those with letters, and the letters we sent out got good responses, so we're having to take no further actions on them.
Alderman Marshall is not here. Any questions of Mr. May? All right, move on to the building code report. You gave them together.
Same thing, report. We had some issues with our first-out residential truck, had a transmission problem with it last month, had to replace the transmission on it, so it was a truck that was not covered under warranty, and after we got it back, we ran it for about four days, and started having issues out over again, so it's back in the shop again. I was told that there was a fluid leak in the transmission from the repair, and it had been stopped, and we're supposed to pick it back up in the morning, so we'll have our full complement of garbage trucks back on the road, so should not be any delay on paperwork pickup of residential garbage, and our commercial truck is operating 24/7, just about, we have a large commercial load of trash, but we're pleased to put the hours in and get it picked up.
Okay. Thank you, sir, nothing more. Street department foreman, Mr. Ricky Joe Davis.
We've been trying to keep up with, I don't like to call them complaints, that's what they are anyway, trying to keep up with all of that, fix some street cuts, so we've got several to fix, things like sparklers, when they get started, they don't know when to quit. We've had, we had one dump truck that was down in December, we had to fix brakes on it, and I guess y'all, everybody knows, we've had to move our stockpile from where it was at across the road. Been working on Christmas stuff for, seemed like forever, but hopefully we've got most of that put up and gone, and just doing what we do every day, and all like that, but...
You want to give a report about this weekend's storm damage?
Oh, we had two, two incidents in the city for the weekend storm, one of them was at George and York Street, it demolished two light poles, and they finally got the electricity and everything hung back up today about 1:00 this afternoon, so we got to move all our barrels and stuff out of the way, and we've got, still got some limbs and stuff to pick up, but they're out of the street, they're not bothering anything. And I had one on Boyd Street, a pipe fell out of, got knocked out of a big, I think it was a black gum tree, but it landed right in the middle of the street over there this afternoon, so we got everything cleaned out of the street, we still have to go back and pick all that stuff up. That's about all that really that I know will happen in the city as far as the storm this weekend.
There was a lot of litter, like, right after Christmas, and I noticed that there's these volunteers that you've gotten together to, to have them picked up, so...
They're paid employees.
Oh, they're paid employees, just doing it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we may need to consider putting up some...
That don't do any good, miss. We can put some up, Miss Dorothy, but it don't do...
But it was horrible, all over town.
And it's still horrible, we just picked up several different spots, but we picked up some last week, and you couldn't tell it by Monday morning, that you even went down through there and picked it up, but anyway, we are trying to attempt to pick that up.
Maybe we can get our media people to help us in that area, as it relates litter and how it does not beautify your city.
That's where we're at on that, we're trying to get it up, but it's a never-ending battle, no matter who you use.
And it was, it was worse, like, right after the holiday.
Alderman Mosley, did you have anything on the committee?
February 11th, 5:00 in the afternoon, it didn't work out, and I have a street committee meeting, so people can come forward for the little streets, if they would like to have repaired, so we can get our little snow competition.
Here in the courtroom?
Yes, I'm sorry, here.
We'll get that thrown out to the press and posted on Facebook, and spread the word as best we can. Okay, any more questions of Mr. Davis? Thank you, sir. All right, now then, the community and economic development committee?
May I ask, so, do you plan to, like, ride the streets, like what has been done previously?
Well, no, I think we need to...
So you're just going to let people come in?
Let people come in and tell us what they would like, then we will take the list and ride the street and see what we're talking about.
Do we have any streets left over from last year that...
No, we did, all the streets that were on the list, yes.
All right, moving to community and economic development, anything?
None at this time.
Hopery, okay. Ways and Means Committee, Alderman Henderson?
Yes, in your packet, you do have an ordinance, as you know, the state law requires that we have a balanced budget, and you do have an ordinance number of 923, and at this time, I move that we place ordinance number 923 on its first reading to amend the city of Morin's budget.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, show of hands. Ordinance number 923, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 923.
Ordinance number 923, an ordinance amending ordinance number 914 of the City of Warren, Arkansas, to amend the budget for the City of Warren, Arkansas, for the calendar year 2019, appropriating funds for said city budget and for other purposes, be it ordained by the City Council of Warren, Arkansas. Section one, section one of ordinance number 914 of the City of Warren, Arkansas, is hereby amended to read as follows. That the following budget for the operations of the City of Warren, Arkansas, for the calendar year 2019, be and the same, is hereby approved, and funds in said amount are hereby appropriated for said purposes and accounts during the year 2019, from time to time as needed. A detailed budget document shall be available in the Office of the City Clerk for public inspection during regular business hours. Non-restricted expenditures, administration, $339,918.50. Law enforcement, a hundred, um, $1,208,965.85. Fire is $344,655.76. Building codes, $19,556.10. District Court, $97,671.90. Municipal building, $30,212.73. Recreation, $159,224.70. Cultural Center, $30,051.10. Armory Neighborhood Center, $17,030.80. Shooting Range, $34,633.91. Senior Citizen Center, $4,693.81. Other is $29,125.51. Airport is $21,483.70. The total general is $3,074,939.32. Restricted expenditures, street department, $549,553. Total restricted is $545,555. Other accounts, the breathalyzer fund, $760.92. Court Automation Fund, $8,140.86. District Court Cost Fund, $15,681.49. Economic Development Fund, $164,373.40. Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund, $6,540. Law fee, $23,518.37. Law Enforcement Fund, $39,322.15. Sales and Use Tax Fund, $1,568.419.24. Municipal Judge Retirement Fund, zero. State Funds, $1,639,244.85. The Warren Shooting Range Fund, $29,917.38. FAA Aviation Grant, $64,649.85. Total other accounts, $3,560,968.51. For a total budget of $7,181,462.83.
Move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 923 on its second reading.
Second.
All those in favor by a show of hands? That's five.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 914 of the City of Warren, Arkansas, to amend the budget for the City of Warren, Arkansas, for the calendar year 2019, appropriating funds for said city budget and for other purposes.
Mayor, what'd you read, section two?
Oh, did I skip?
Section two, this ordinance shall be effective on the 13th day of January 2020, so that the timely payment of obligations of the City of Warren may be made, and the same being necessary for the maintenance of the good credit of the City of Warren, and an emergency is hereby declared to exist.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 923 on its third and final reading.
So who?
All those in favor by a show of hands? That's five, four.
Uh, an ordinance amending ordinance number 914 of the City of Warren, Arkansas, to amend the budget for the City of Warren, Arkansas, for the calendar year 2019, appropriating funds for said city budget and for other purposes.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 923.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry. I'm thinking about the game.
Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? That's five, four.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause.
So who?
All those in favor by a show of hands, adopt the emergency clause. That's all five.
That is the Ways and Means Committee report.
All right. Uh, Parks and Rec, Mr. Wader? Oh, oh, wait a minute, I zoomed them down to the bottom. Go ahead. I, I wa, I was told before this started what time the game started, so.
You have to know.
We'll, we'll go back and pick them up, but go ahead, sir, Cal.
Um, just kinda not much more than a month away getting all the high school sports started, softball and baseball out there, so we're just kinda full swing, getting all the field ready, checking all the lights, school boards and everything, just trying to make sure everything can be ready to go in another month. Nothing really out of the ordinary, nothing big happening right now.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Now let's back up just a little bit to reports of business and boards and commissions. The Planning Commission, there was no meeting. Aviation Commission, they did not have a meeting. And then you've got the minutes of the monthly meeting of the Water and Sewer Commission and the balance sheet. And you've got the Housing Authorities Minutes of their monthly meeting and the Twin Rivers Board of Directors Report. Now we're to the Cultural Center Commission, um, anything, Alderman Frazier?
Nothing new.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business?
I would just like to make a statement, uh, if I'd made Ms. Bowlesworth just a minute, um, Ms. Topley as well. I think it's been a year since I made the motion about moving ahead with, uh, job creation, and I don't think we've been able to do anything as of yet. I'm just wondering, should I drop this and let it go, because if we're not gonna do anything, why keep it, uh, as a vote? And just go ahead and leave it alone, and go ahead with the B C I D C, see whatever you've done before, and see where you are five years from now, ten years from now. I just want to say that it'd be some progress made where we could see if there's any way that jobs could be recruited here. Uh, because if you're gonna do that and get young people, uh, to come, uh, to build, grow in your area, this is what you're gonna have to do. If not, whatever jobs that you bring, um, here are gonna go someplace else, you know, so. That's my concern, I just wanna see progress for one, and I'd like to see my young man, my young man, my three grandsons come back this way if they would, which I doubt they will. But you know, I mean, if you wanna see growth, like it used to be in this area, so I just wonder what, what should we do? Should we pursue it further or just say, forget it, and let it go back to B C I D C, uh, quitting, coming up, having a meeting, uh, saying you've brought out made contacts instead of being able to go and have a national contact throughout this, uh, country to see if there's, uh, recruiters that might be able to come to more and relocate, bring jobs. It's a long process, folks, there's no ifs and buts about it, because we have a lot of work to do. Building up neighborhoods, we talk about cleaning up and all this. If we continue to have areas where it looks trashy and everything else, we're not gonna have folks to come that go out and get training to come here. They might go somewhere else, a little rock or whatever, but they're not gonna come yet. They might go to Pine Bluff. I was talking to some of my folks in Pine Bluff and they've done some things up there, so. It's all up to us, what we wanna do, we wanna.
Who wants to respond? Alderman Telford?
Okay. Well, first of all, I'm gonna piggyback off of some, Brother Zach said, and it's been bothering me for quite some time. We always wanna look off afar in our lives, and we wanna, we don't never take care of the people that's here in our own community. You know, like the hospital down there, they have top-notch jobs open down there, time in and time out. So, they chief financial officer is open, that's an excellent job. I mean, and then I just thought about Mr. Ashcraft over there when he started that lumber company, what did we give him to start up? He done a great job over there starting it up at the potless, shut it down, brought more jobs. And then we got Will Maxwell and Shay out there on the east side, is out there struggling, trying to make. I, I love to see us concentrate a little bit on the people that are here that's actually helping and, and just giving back to the community, instead of the ones just coming in and raping the community and then turn around and leave. Okay, on the other side, Brother Zach, on the national thing, we, on our last meeting, I guess you must missed it, we come up with some documents and everything to put out on advertisement for those type of things, and we're just waiting on the murder move forward with it.
And it has been submitted to the state paper, and it will be submitted to others with the deadline of February.
I was been, what was I, today, I had something to drink that day?
Like Crown Royal, maybe.
Okay, let's move on to, now we're coming to the public comment, um, area. Do any of the Aldermen have anyone to recognize?
I wanna recognize Mr. Mike Weatherford.
Okay, he signed up too, so.
Okay.
He's, um, Mr. Weatherford, did you want to come forward?
Thank you for that, sir.
You're welcome. I'm gonna get you after, but that's.
Okay, sir.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council. I think I'm, might be the only person, or maybe one of just the very few, who have ever got the nerve to get up and speak out about, the private prison, uh, that is planned to be located in our area. And if we were talking about locating another chicken plant, or another sawmill, or a plant that makes stewed pink tomatoes, you know, I wouldn't be here. I would be fine with it. But, uh, but I object to having a, uh, private, for-profit, non-union prison, uh, come to our town or anywhere in this area. Uh, so I'm gonna go through my remarks, and I'll make it quick, because Nancy and I have to play hand, knee and foot at 6:30, so. Last Thursday morning, uh, I was busy trying to call, uh, the City Council members to discuss the private prison deal, the potential land swap. With them and kinda, you know, get where they stood on it. And I, I didn't realize while I was trying to call folks, that, uh, there was a meeting going on. And a special meeting called for the specific purpose of voting on the land swap. I didn't know about it, and I don't think many people in Warren knew about it. I guess some media was called, uh, I don't think there's any rules or anything about how far you, uh, how far ahead you have to notify the public of a meeting. But I do know that in Warren, Michigan, it's 36 hours, because I looked it up on Google, and I said, oh boy, you know, they've done an illegal meeting. But it turned out it was Warren, Michigan, and not Warren, Arkansas. Anyway, I questioned the timing of the meeting, and, you know, I'd like an explanation from somebody as to why a meeting was called a short-term, special meeting, um, with notice so short that the Eagle Democrat didn't have it in their paper, the Saline River Chronicle, didn't have it. Uh, who knew about it? Uh, do you want public input on stuff like this? You know, it seems like, uh, this whole deal uh, with the private for-profit prison, has been kinda done behind closed doors, under the table, however you wanna put it. And when I ask people in town, you know, uh, what about the prison? What, what do you, what do you think about that? Well, you know, it's a done deal. It doesn't matter what I think about it. It's a done deal. It's all been worked out. So, I think somebody ought to get up and speak about it, and, you know, it scares me to death to get up and speak, you know. You know, they say one of the things that people fear the most is getting up and speaking, especially about something like this. But if anybody came here, uh, for this meeting because they oppose the prison, thank you for showing up. I really appreciate it. I, I oppose the, oppose the land swap or anything that brings a private prison to our area, uh, because private prison companies like LaSalle Corrections, you know, they claim they're saving the government money, but their true focus is on protecting their own bottom lines. They're interested in lowering operating costs, uh, cutting corners, uh, paying less than, uh, their government counterparts, providing less training than their government counterparts, and, uh, nationwide, this all shows up in the higher employee turnover. And more assaults between, between prisoners, and more assaults on guards in private prisons than public prisons. And, you know, the number of states that are using private prisons is actually going down. It's been going down since 2012. And the latest state to outlaw, uh, private prisons was California just a few days ago. Arkansas does not have a private prison. Now, the state tried it in 1998, and it was a disaster. And now, uh, there's a few, or maybe quite a few misguided politicians and business people who wanna try it again. And they wanna use Warren as the guinea pig. We don't need that. You know, we need growth, we need jobs, we need industry coming in, but we don't need a prison. Especially a private prison. I mean, is Warren really that desperate? I know everybody has good intentions, you know, I'm, I'm not criticizing the intentions of most people involved. Our mayor, she, you know, she wants income. It's a small southern town that, you know, we struggle like a lot of other small southern towns. Uh, she wants more revenue for the city. The B C I D C, or is it B C E D C, which, which is it? B C E D C, uh, wants to show that it can deliver the goods for. B C E D C, uh, wants to show that you can deliver the goods for Bradley County. And, you know, we appreciate what they try to do. Uh, local merchants, they want more business. The law enforcement and the judges, you know, they, they want, uh, jail cells. The county judge wants the income that would be generated from a contract between the county and the state. You know, who knows how much that is, have you read the contracts? I mean, the county is getting paid forty-four dollars, but how much is the county paying LaSalle? Is it thirty-two dollars and forty-nine cents a day per prisoner? Who knows? Most of this stuff is behind closed doors and not known. And, you know, uh, folks claim, oh, confidentiality agreement. Well, there is no, anybody that's got a confidentiality agreement with LaSalle needs to tear it up and throw it in the wastebasket. Because we're not talking a chicken plant here, we're talking a prison and it's a public issue and it all should be out in the open. And of course, there's our state representative who I've seen is here. He's been a major player, you know, since early 2017 at least, uh, to bring LaSalle to the area. And, you know, he rightfully, uh, wants to deliver some growth and get the political capital that comes along with it. But he also manages a, a medical supplies company that stands to benefit from it. And of course, we don't wanna forget, you know, those few dozen people who are desperate for, uh, for employment.
Sixty, you're okay. You're all right, Mike?
They're the ones left out. You know, uh, they're poor now and they'll still be poor after getting a poverty level wage job from LaSalle. You know, we can do better than this. I don't think that, uh, let's call them the powers that be, you know, the commissions and, and the city council and the quorum courts and everything. They haven't, in my opinion, fully considered, uh, the negative social and quality of life effects that have in a prison in this area and specifically in Warren. You know, we're talking about lower property values, we're talking about drug dealers and, and other bad actors coming in that are, uh, clandestinely getting drugs and so forth to the prisoners. How about the hesitation of people who drive into town, drive down Bradley County roads? Roads that have been sprayed with toxic herbicides and brown to begin with? And then they see a sign that says, caution, prison area, do not pick up hitchhikers. You know, is that the kind of town they wanna move into? What about these retirees that are coming back to their hometown? Are they gonna think twice if they find out there's a prison there? I just don't think that the negative effects have been fully factored in here. And, uh, but I guess it's a done deal. The council has voted, the quorum courts have voted, all the state commissions have fallen in line. Uh, so I guess it's gonna happen. But all I can say is that all those folks, they decided to go for the money, to go for the money. You know, there's bigger things than that. And I think it's a shame that the city of Warren would sell its soul for a, for profit prison. And I'm against it and thank you for letting me have my say.
Yes, sir. Public comment is what it says, public comment. There's only one thing that I do want to clear up since, uh, the press is present and everybody is watching. This council did not have a illegal, underhanded meeting when we had a called special meeting. Uh, I will provide you with, uh, the information, I have it here, where we notified the press, which is all by the F O I rules that we have to do. So this was not a, I have the utmost, uh, respect for every council member and their integrity and mine too. And we did nothing whatsoever in having that call meeting last Thursday to move the process that we needed to move forward, uh, forward. And that, that's all, and, uh, Mr. Weatherford, you are more than welcome to come to my office at any time. Present me with a list of your concerns and I will do my best to, uh, reach out to the people that I know in the state of Arkansas that can, uh, maybe give you some answers to some of your questions about that. But, uh, and there's no one else that has signed up to speak, so we will move right along.
Madam Warren, Mayor, I just had one question, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Get an understanding about the land swap. Do, we pass the land swap, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why, I guess I'm finding asking again why we swap instead of getting paid for the land that we go to change, exchange to.
We wanted an aggressive proposal, uh, as I said in the, in the meeting last Thursday. This became a economic development project and, uh...
And I stand, again, you made it an economic project, but again, if we wind up in the same situation as Dermott, then what we have? We have a prison in Dermott and it hasn't had any growth.
I, I'm, I'm not here to, to...
Well, I understand that, I'm just saying, ma'am.
To answer for Dermott?
The people there, uh, that work there probably live in, in other counties.
Well, and more than likely, we will be able to provide jobs should we get this project, uh, for people in other counties. Seventy-eight, seventy-eight jobs, uh, are, uh, what they will start out doing?
Okay, I don't see them living in Warren, they're paying taxes in Warren.
We will work on that. Okay, uh, let's move down to the...
Am I crazy, shall I, shall I live in that big lake? Oh, huh? Damn.
All right, let's move forward with the announcements. Uh, Martin Luther King holiday for this city is scheduled for, uh, January the twentieth. Uh, the twenty-twenty census bureau complete count committee has a meeting January the twenty-third, twenty-twenty at five in the municipal courtroom. And I will say, we were scheduled to have someone to come speak to us tonight about the census and the importance of the census, not only to our city, but our county and our area and our region. She will reschedule, she had sickness in the family and was not able to be here, but hopefully she'll be able to be here, uh, soon. The twenty-twenty winter conference is in February the twelfth to the fourteenth in Little Rock. Uh, now I need a motion to pay the bills for December twenty-nineteen.
I move that we pay our bills for December twenty-nineteen.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor by show of hands? And, uh, set the next meeting to February the twentieth. The agenda meeting will be the Thursday before, which is the sixth at seven AM. Once again, the public is welcome to come, all our meetings are open, always have been and always will be. The second Monday's meeting on video. We've already said that, do I have a...
Second.
All those in favor by show of hands?